I'm going to go ahead and call me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Are none? All in favor say aye.
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 Here is next is approval of claims for payment.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the claims for payment as presented.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is utility permits. I do not have one. Secondary roads.
Nothing really to report for us. Highway 14 open is open, but that's more of a state thing. And we'll keep our county line road at 35 miles an hour.
How about the Gifford Bridge?
Everyone is there working, so that's an improvement is that they're working. I'd guess a week to two weeks of work left.
Okay. And then there-
It's just guardrails and then they paint the underside of the bridge and then it can be open to traffic.
Okay. Then they're patching on the shortcut over.
Correct.
Next I have Septic Smart Week proclamation. Jess, you put that on there. You want to talk about it?
Sure, well, I mean, we just want to read the proclamation.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to get up or can I stay here?
I'll bring you up there.
Whereas proper septic system use and routine care are vital to protecting public health, preserving our highly valued groundwater, lake streams and waterways and avoiding costly repairs that can result from neglect. And whereas nearly 3,000 septic systems can't treat wastewater from homes and businesses. And whereas wastewater professionals of Hardin County and the surrounding area use their expertise in the design, installation, maintenance and regulation of septic systems in Hardin County. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Septic Smart Program used by Hardin County Health Officials does educate homeowners about the need for proper septic system use and routine maintenance. And whereas residents and the environment of Hardin County benefit from properly designed, installed, operated and maintained septic systems. That was here yesterday.
Go ahead.
Now therefore, we, the Hardin County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the week of September 14 through the 18th, 2020, as Septic Smart Week.
Okay. Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the Septic Smart Week proclamation.
I will second that motion.
Seconded. Any discussion? Thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? More roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have our tax abatements. I have two of these.
Yep. I would make a motion to approve the tax abatement orders identified as 5913 and 5914 as presented.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is a request for assignment of tax sale certificate. I've been asked to table this till next week by Michelle.
I'd make a motion to table the request for tax or assignment of tax sale certificate until Wednesday, September 23rd.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor say aye.
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 Here he is. Next I have the auditor's monthly report.
I will make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report for the month of August.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor say aye.
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 Here he is. Next I have his recorder's monthly report.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the monthly recorder's report for the month of August as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have our changes of statuses. The auditor's office. I have three of these, I believe.
First, I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of the temporary seasonal part-time help of Carol Humphrey, effective 9/15/2020 at $10 an hour. This is, I'll do that in explanation. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
These are all temporary part-time people to assist with the influx of absentees, processing, preparing envelopes for mailing, as well as other duties that's assigned.
Any other discussion? Harry, no more? All in favor say aye.
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 Here he is.
The second one is same hiring for temporary seasonal part-time help at $10 an hour for Scott Humphrey, also as of 9/15/2020.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, no more? All in favor say aye.
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 Here he is.
And the third one is the hiring of Carol Straight, also part-time seasonal, part-time or temporary seasonal part-time hiring in the auditor's office.
I'll second that.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Starting on 9/15.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Harry, no more? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Can I say something after the fact? So I have four part-timers right now that are working, but they're not, they, they look like they're all working right now. But it's just because we're training them. Once we get going, we're going to have one in the morning, one in the afternoon, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. But like now, it looks like we have four extra people and I don't want you to think that's going to continue throughout the whole time. So.
Okay.
It's just getting them trained and through the security that's required to use i-orders and that type of stuff.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you. Next I have is change of status, property management.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the hiring of Mason Kelly as property management assistant, effective September 21st, 2020, at a rate of 2051 an hour. And one other note with that, the salary to be reevaluated quarterly for the first year.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Management update. Thomas?
Oh, he said he was going to be-
Do we have any, Rocky or Megan? Let's go with Megan. Or Rocky, both.
They won't have emergency management.
Or I'm sorry.
They have COVID update.
I don't have anything for emergency management update, but let's go to COVID update. It's not on here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rocky.
I put our weekly numbers up on Facebook, so they'll be updated every Monday night like we've been doing the last few weeks. But just to kind of throw some numbers at you so far, during this whole pandemic, we've had 253 positive PCR, which is the normal COVID cases. We've had eight antigen, which has been something that they've started doing within the last few weeks. And that basically means that those eight people were inconclusive. So they, they were neither positive nor negative for the virus. We've got 192 that have recovered, our one death, and then 3,320 Hardin County residents have been tested.
Thank you.
Before I go to public comments, do we have everybody in the mouse?
BJ wants me to show some pictures too.
All right.
Can we do the pictures, Michael? So you sharing the screen?
Oh, I might, oh.
But these will be pictures from S-75. BJ wanted me to remind people why we lowered the speed limit. And you have to remember, two years ago, this was a perfectly fine road. Had no issues. You're sharing the screen now? And so. Okay. So I mean, this is just some example. You can see like where some of the new patches are. And then the concrete immediately next to it, which is caused from the transition of a heavy semi, maybe going 68 miles an hour or so. As its tires go from one surface to the other, it's a big impact and you can see that it's not good for our road and we've spent a lot of time down there patching and apparently we'll be spending more. So it's disappointing, but.
Are you going to be patching with cement or it looks like some of that is gravel?
Well, the gravel part is where we replaced the color.
Oh, all right.
So we haven't come to patch it. We let it sit for a while so that it settles.
Okay.
Yep. But yeah, we'll be back there patching some more. Appreciate if people would follow the 35 mile an hour speed limit. Especially a semi.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's just kind of showing the situation down there.
Lance, can I just have the floor for a minute on this?
Go ahead.
So I, I think it's important to note that the work done by our secondary road crews has been amazing. I mean, you can tell just in this picture you see right here, it's not like they're doing bad work. This is, uh, this is good concrete you see on the left that's less than two weeks old. And it's starting to deteriorate in two weeks. So, you know, the condition of their labors has been beat up. On Sunday night, my son and I witnessed a spectacular yet horrifying event. We watched as we were out in our yard. Somebody pulling a 12-foot utility trailer behind a pickup. They were, they were excessively speeding down the road. The trailer came off the hitch and almost came loose. Thank goodness for safety chains, but there were a ball of sparks and I mean, it was, it was very impressive. But my son said, wow, I can't imagine, you know, driving and trying to pull that and having somebody behind you or coming, I mean, they were in both lanes. So if another vehicle would have been approaching, we would have had, you know, a serious problem. So, you know, at this point, Taylor and Sheriff McDaniel or the law enforcement officers, they can't do anything right, according to the, the court of public opinion. Because if Taylor suggests embargoing based on weight alone, he's interfering with commerce. If Sheriff McDaniels and his deputies on our state patrol enforces a speed limit, then their revenue is running a speed trap. So I believe both are trying to preserve life and safety along with our infrastructure. So, you know, the stretch of road has had Band-Aids applied, but no major work done since 1974 when it was built. I'm not advocating for this project to be moved up. I am advocating for people to just follow the law. Because the concerns of, well, why is it 35? You know, cars don't do this damage. And it's maybe something we need to look at of 35 for commercial vehicles, 55 for passenger vehicles. But at this point, in, in two weeks, this damage is very severe. And it's going to cost the people of Hardin County, not the people that are operating these commercial vehicles from all over the country to replace it. So I think it's important to realize that Taylor and Dave and their employees are doing their best. We're just not following the guidelines and rules.
And we have gotten Grundy County to agree to do it in 2022. You'll have to remember, we can remind people, the reason it hasn't been done yet is because we share the road with Grundy County. So. But it's on our list.
So.
On the remaining, the other parts, yeah, there's only two left, but yeah. Okay.
So thank you guys and girls.
Thank you. I got Thomas here for emergency management update.
So the COVID updates.
Wait.
Rocky gave us some numbers.
Oh, did she?
Yep.
All right. I don't need to go over that. The project for the EMPG supplemental is moving forward. We're, we're going to have different locks installed over there. I'm going to have a discussion with Renee after the meeting about another project and change in the scope of our EMPG. As far as the duration, that work is progressing very nicely, especially in Union. New Providence and Hubbard had theirs cleaned up pretty well just within a few days, Union being the hardest hit community. But they're progressing and I've been working with them this last week. I had a meeting with them in the evening, two evenings this week and then during the day, and I'll be back down there tomorrow. Working to get their EMPG application started so that they can start working on getting reimbursement for their expenses down there. The one thing I will say is we've had some questions about us not being in the individual assistance from FEMA. And they had all the pictures. So the day after, the day after the duration on the 11th, Matt and Michael and the sheriff's office sent four guys out. And they took pictures of every home that was damaged. They took tons of pictures. And we didn't find anything that was major or destroyed in FEMA's eyes. Okay, so I'm not going to minimize that there are people right now that are at a loss for what to do with their homes. Because they've had roofs that have problems. I dealt with one yesterday. The insurance company's only given them $11,000 for what looks like it's going to be a $25,000 or $50,000 project. But I called Home Line Security again yesterday and they reaffirmed that unless we can find five or 10 destroyed homes, we're not going to get in the declaration. There's not a true threshold, but we can't validate the damage to be able to get FEMA declaration.
Is it only damage to homes?
Yes.
It's not other-
Correct. Individual assistance is only for damage to the living residents that the person owns and lives in. So rental properties don't count. Houses that you're trying to fix up and move into don't count. You have to own it and you have to be living in it for it to count for FEMA declaration. So that's, I, I have taken the Iowa individual assistance applications out to multiple people individually and explain to them the program. But it is up to them to do the application and look at the guidelines and talk to Micah out of Marshalltown to do the application. So, but I've met with, I think I've gone out to six homes directly and talked to them about their damage and taken their, taken the application to them, tried to help them understand the application so long. So we're doing as much as we can to help them. But insurance companies are insurance companies and I don't have any say over that. FEMA doesn't have any say over that, nor does the state. So. But that's what's going on right now.
Thank you.
Hey, Thomas?
Yes.
Can you explain what I've been having you and the IT folks and Jody help with the EOC building kind of serving as an off-site courthouse?
Correct. So the court is now, as of September 13th, I think. Court is started back with in-person trials. And they can do the trial in the space upstairs. They have enough social distancing for the trial. But they don't have enough space for jury selection. So we were just working this last week, well, last week and a half, we've been working, trying to get the building, the whole building, because we're using both the garage and the EOC room itself to set up for 60 people for jury selection, because they have to have all 60 people here. And then they have to have 30 in the one room. And then Michael and Matt have been working with our technology to try and make sure that what the lawyers and the judge say in here is heard out in the other room. So that they're not going back over and wasting a lot of time with the people who are sitting out here in the garage waiting to be selected, if they need to be selected. So that's going to continue. I think the last email I saw is that we might have one week where we have two trying to do jury selection at the same time. But that's, that's a court problem and that's a lawyer problem. Sorry, Darryl. That's not my problem. I only got one building and I only got so much technology. So.
That last week of September, we might actually start a trial, pick the jury there, move the trial over to here. And then later in the week, when another trial starts, we may hold the whole second trial over in your building. So and that's kind of what we're anticipating right now. So we're going to, we appreciate the use of that building and how everybody's kind of come together to make it work. And I think the, the court was, the judges were kind of impressed with the setup and they thought it would work out really well. So I just want to thank everybody for helping with that.
And we're, we're trying. The, the court thing, we'll have to have a discussion about, their last trial was going to be, was going to take like three or four days. And I can't be out of the office for three or four days. But if they take just one day, I got plenty of stuff that needs done, that I can be out of the office long enough to let them have a day. Because I can work from my truck. So, okay. Jessica?
I have a question. There's no immediate move to open the courthouse in the foreseeable future, correct?
Not that I see at the moment.
Because I, I need to move this building location to the EOC. I had not planned on that early on because I thought maybe we would be open by then. But as time rolled on, I realized that was not going to work. And I still have time to deal with it, but before I went and published and moved things. And now we have during trials and things getting in between. I just need to be able to scout a third would be for use with voting.
We, the only trial we have set in November right now, I believe, is on November 5th. So we shouldn't-
Well, we would get out by then.
I would hope so.
Well, and the nice thing about the that it's movable chairs, movable tables, I mean, it says probably know where it needs to go and how it hooks up and all of that stuff. And then Jody's work at trying to get all the chairs over there, but probably an hour to two hours and we can have a room. Able change and serve the next guest.
Okay.
But I don't, the election, so the election, you guys held the primary in that building and several people commented how nice it was to be able on one floor spaced. They were socially distanced. And that's the reason, I talked to State yesterday about a change in the scope of a project. And the social distancing and it's still a county building. But we're kind of, you know, so I had a long conversation with EMPG specialists yesterday in what we're using that building for and how we're using it to social distance for the courthouse. Because the courthouse is historic and we can't make changes in the courthouse to do the social distancing like we should. So it's fine. As long, I mean, as long as we don't show up a disaster. Somebody's going to, you know, even on trial day, if we have a disaster come in and we have to open the office. I'll try and be as nice as I can to the judge, but I'm going to be walking in the door and going to my office. And what are you going to do? Take my birthday away?
I, so I just want to say that it's money well spent that has been spent for updating and upgrading and making that building useful for more than just emergency management. To me, one thing that still needs to be done is for the sound, the sound system in-
Acoustics.
That, that's one thing that definitely needs to be done yet and isn't the interfere with the courts that are going to be held over there. But that's one thing that we do notice. And as far as using Zoom in there also, it's, it's noticeable. So.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? No more? Let's open it up for public comments.
Open it up? Okay. I have a comment. It's Julie Dunn. The property management hire, they're going to review quarterly. The wage, is this going to be a new thing now that for the first year, all new hires will have a quarterly review of wages? Is, is this normally done and why the change? Thank you.
Sometimes it's done half a year. They automatically put a raise in if they met the criteria. Me personally, I believe quarterly is fine to see if a criteria has been met or not. It doesn't mean they have to do anything at a quarter, but it's in the writing that they can do it in a quarter.
Will it cover all new employees?
It depends on the department heads.
Um. Do you think that depending on the, depending on the department head? Gee, okay, thanks.
Any other comments?
Yeah, yes, this is Pauline Lloyd. For, are we painting the Gifford Bridge right now? Has some of that been started?
He's there.
I mean, what? Excuse me?
The underside of the bridge that they'll be painting, like the old steel beams that he has to coat them for corrosion. But his truck is there, but he has not started work yet. He's currently somewhere else. And he will not do it under traffic.
Okay, so is he saying then that he can get this done in two weeks? Is he promising us that or?
They don't make promises, Pauline. I believe he told Joe he wanted to start at the end of this week and it's going to take a couple of days.
Also depends on weather.
Yeah. And hopefully it's dry enough that he doesn't need a boat, but it's South Fork, so I assume he'll still need that boat to get out to the mill.
Golly, he's taking his time. I suggest we don't hire this guy ever again to paint bridges.
It has nothing to do with us.
Okay. I could paint that bridge faster, I think, than he could, but that's my own comment. The other comment I have is about the Septic, the Septic Smart Week proclamation. What about our hog confinements? Shouldn't they be included in that? Because some of them are dumping into the rivers, our run, our runways, our little creeks and river streams. So shouldn't they be included in that? So is there some way we can, I mean, you know, why should just all us other people? I mean, we had to put in a new septic tank and we were inspected. So how about let's inspect them and make them come to the right thing too, that they're not dumping into our rivers and streams and runways and polluting them. They have to be held accountable also.
Well, unfortunately, they're not a septic tank, so that's not what the proclamation was about. But I, I don't discredit what you're saying, that everybody should be accountable for that. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Here no more public comments. Let's go to other business.
I have no other business.
BJ?
I took care of my other business. Thank you, Lance.
Um, then I could ask for adjournment or recess.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Been seconded and discussion. Aye?
Aye.
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 Here is, we're adjourned.